And then I'd like to call this meeting to order. The date is September 24th, 2019. The time is 7:30. So would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Here.
Budmats.
Present.
O'Briens.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Besessi.
Here.
Diestis.
Present.
Sanoyka.
Here.
With seven members present and zero absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. The first order of business this evening that I have is to approve the minutes from the September 10th, 2019 city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletion to these minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall these minutes be approved? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The meeting minutes are approved. Moving forward, I would like to take a moment and deviate for public hearings on both the library tax levy and the city tax levy. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Cannon Budmats. If there isn't any discussion, we will now go ahead and deviate from the agenda. The first one would be for the tax levy. The city council here is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the library tax levy. The purpose of this hearing is to invite oral comments from interested citizens concerning the library tax. Let the record show that the public hearing is opened at 7:30 on September 24th, 2019. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the library tax levy? Going once. Seeing none, let the record show that the public hearing closed at 7:32 on September 24th, 2019. You want to close the public hearing on that one first? I have another one to do.
You have another public hearing.
I've got one more.
You're going to do it?
Yeah.
Not separate?
No, together. And then the next public hearing is for the city tax levy. The city council is also scheduled to hold a public hearing on the city tax levy. The purpose of this hearing is to invite oral comments from interested citizens concerning the city tax levy. Let the record show that the public hearing opened at 7:33 on September 24th, 2019. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak regarding the library tax levy?
City tax levy.
Going once. Let the record show that the public hearing closed at 7:33 on September 24th, 2019. Seeing as how both of those have been concluded, may I have a motion to close the floor?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on, next up is the mayor's report. Just a couple of quick announcements. The first one, last week, I was invited to speak at a CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan Agency of Planning, event called Small Plans and Big Ideas. It's a forum series. And this particular showcase was about harnessing technology for a safer future in communities. And I just want to give a thank you for Chicago Metropolitan Agency of Planning for including Rolling Meadows in that discussion. And then I also received in the mail last week an announcement that Toys for Tots Dinner, beginning on Friday, October 4th, 2019, hosted by the Marine Corps League Detachment 80. They want to have the word put out that the Toys for Tots Drive is beginning. And if we could all find it within us to help accumulate or spread the word on Toys for Tots, that would be greatly appreciated. With that, are there any ward reports? Alderman O'Brien?
Just a couple. Mr. Mayor, thanks so much. A couple compliments that I received from residents of the 3rd Ward that asked me to pass on to public works. Kudos on the Kirchhoff Road, as well as Oriole, the passion that was done on Oriole, the residents have noticed that. As well as working with Mr. Suchekki specifically regarding a dip on South Avenue. A lot of vehicle traffic comes down south from Kimball Hill School. There's a noticeable dip there, but Bill did say that would be addressed next year during the stormwater replacement. So the neighbor was, the resident was completely happy with that. Another couple kudos. Some of the folks did watch the tape of the meeting from last time, and they are very pleased with the proposed approach for Lot 5 along the creek between the Jewel Lot or Ben Franklin Bank and cleaning up that. And the last one that was asked to share with the council, a lady by the name of Diane Bailing, who lives in the 3rd Ward, reached out to me and just wanted me to share with the council is that there was about eight residents that attended Tom Morrison's meet and greet with the residents. And of the eight there, she was saying that she kind of unofficially, their official spokesperson to bring it back, that group that happened to attend there, all for the city tax levy of the marijuana, recreational use marijuana tax for 3%, but are strictly opposed to opening a recreational facility within the town. They just asked me to relay that back from the eight or so residents. They didn't have an official count, but Diane was estimating about eight people attended, and they were all opposed to it.
Thank you. Any further ward reports? Seeing none, then we'll move right along to the next segment, which is going to be opening up the floor for public comment for the next 20 minutes. Prior to opening up the podium, I will share this bit of information and parameters on those who wish to speak. In order to secure the rights of citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials and to guarantee the elected officials an order and dignified form in which to conduct city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the city council. Per the rules of procedure, the public is to address the city council. And the fact that no member of the city council responds does not mean that the city council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment made. In order to attain this objective in the following, the rules of conduct must hereby be established. Any person who wished to address the city council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer and as such shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the city council shall state their name and the street they live on. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes to address the city council. Questions and/or commentary shall be limited to the city business. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city council shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members and/or the city officers who are present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect. Affinity shall not be used in any form or manner. Seeing that said, the first name on the list is Vladimir Rubchinsky.
It's the three of us. We just signed up in case.
You can approach and state that here. That's fine.
Hi. Zach Caveitz, and I'm here with Vlad and Tanya Rubchinsky. And we're here just for the item J under the consent resolutions. And we put our names out, just in case you guys had any questions for us. So in case you guys have any questions for us.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. That takes care of a significant load on the list. Thank you. The next line item here is Lauren Galucci.
Hi, I'm Lauren Galucci. I live at 2507 Oak Lane. I was not going to speak, but we decided kind of as a group of those of us who have been supporting the chicken ordinance that we'd just like one chance to sort of thank everyone for all the time that you all have invested into this issue. We've had, over the course of several meetings, I don't know the exact number, but I would guess between 10 and 15 residents who have come to meetings and spoken in favor of the chicken ordinance. We've had three who have come and spoken against the chicken ordinance. I personally feel that the original product that was presented before you all was well researched and showed on all fronts that there is no significant risk to a residential chicken program. Since then, the ordinance was further regulated to a level that I believe cannot possibly have missed any risks or dangers. At this point, I would challenge that there is no logical reason to vote against this ordinance. Every concern, whether factual or based in opinion, has been accommodated through the revisions. If you are still on the fence about the chicken program, I would kindly request that you take a leap of faith and let us show you what joy this program can bring to our community. Have some faith in your residents and let us show you why backyard chicken programs are working in suburbs across Chicago. This is not something that we have created from scratch. This is something that has been tried and proven in other areas. And I think that the product that is the final ordinance that we've come up with just about eliminates any concerns that you could come up with. So in the spirit of progress through participation, I would say that this is an opportunity for all of you to allow residents to really make an impact in a positive way and try out this new venture and show you what a success it can be and what it can bring to our community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That now concludes our public comments list of signatures. So we can move on to the next item, which is pending ordinances in for second reading. First up to bat, letter A, ordinance number 19-42, is to amend Chapter 14 to allow foreign regulate hens and outdoor hen shelters on residential lots in the city of Rolling Meadows. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Sanoyka, proceed.
At the previous city council meeting, we had a public comment from Ms. Megan in the 4th Ward. And she had suggested that we amend the Section 14-163A3, which refers to hens are not to be maintained for financial gain or for any business purpose. We had also had some discussions in the committee of the whole discussing why we would this ban and what other controls already exist within the ordinances. Because we already have a small business license in the city of Rolling Meadows and because eggs specifically are already regulated by the state of Illinois, I would like to move to amend this section from hens are not to be maintained for financial gain or for any business purpose without applicable state or municipal licenses.
Okay.
I need a second.
Is there a second?
I would second that based on resident concerns.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that? Alderman Besessi?
The, I mean, the one concern I have is, you know, it could be in the ordinance, but it seems like it's a unenforceable part of the ordinance. Are we going to know when people are selling their eggs and producing their eggs and selling them? It's on them to get the license. It's on them to do that. They say they're not selling them, but then go and sell them. How do we know?
Mr. Besessi, I think it's just like with anything. I mean, people could be selling anything outside of their house right now. And it has to be treated like a nuisance like we plan to do along the whole lot of times. We get tipped off to it, Manager Crumstock or somebody will take a look into it. But I think it has to be treated like that, is that people speed down Kirchhoff all the time, but our police guys and gals aren't sitting there. They've got other things to take care of. So I think it's be treated on a nuisance basis, my understanding. With the conversation I had with the residents is it would be treated as a nuisance like any other complaint.
Alderman Diestis, you had your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I contacted the state with regard to that. And they basically said if an individual has a flock and sells it out of their home, the state does not require any license. But if this individual wants to sell it at a farmer's market, then they do have to go get a state license. So it's kind of six of one, half those are another. I mean, if they're selling them out of their home, they don't need a state license. But if they are in a farmer's market, they need one type of a limited license. And if they sell eggs from, I forget what the quantity was, or from more than two flocks, then they do have to get a second kind of a license. So for me, six of one or half those are another. If the state doesn't think that they need a license to sell eggs out of their home, I'm fine.
Any further comments? Alderman Sanoyka?
I was just going to provide some additional information with regards to the limited producer's license that Alderman Diestis brought up, which states that any amount of eggs that you sell outside of the site of the, where the chickens are held, so at our city market, for example, would require a license.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? No? Seeing none, then the next step is to cast a vote on that amendment. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
No.
Diestis.
No.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Briens.
Yes.
With five in favor and two opposed, that amendment does go through. Now, further comments on the original? Alderman Sanoyka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to continue our discussion from our last city council meeting on the 10th regarding the lot sizes. So before you, the city council has a memorandum from City Manager Barry Crumstock with our city attorney CC. And this is regarding the recommendation that we had requested for the language of the residential lots to ensure that all single detached homes would qualify for this program as long as they met all of the other setback and square footage requirements. So I would like to make a motion to change the Section 14-163B to a coop run or other structure used for housing hens shall be permitted only in conjunction with a single family detached dwelling containing a minimum of 8,400 square feet, to strike containing a minimum of 8,400 square feet and replacing that with in an approved residentially zoned district. This motion would still require that the home is a single detached residence. So this is not multi-family dwelling or townhomes or apartments or other such, other such areas. I will need a second.
Is there a second to Alderman Sanoyka's requested motion?
Second.
Alderman Beniziano, thank you for making the second. Is there a discussion on this? Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would just like an explanation of what this actually means then. How small of a piece of property are we talking about?
The new wording would actually allow any item, so it could be as small as anything. But anything that's in a zone residential would now be compliant. This goes back to the discussion in the COW that 8,400 was still able to restrict people from applying it. This new wording, as long as you're in that residential zoned area and you're a single family, you can do a backyard chicken.
Do you have any idea what size lot might that be? I know, I know, it's something I wasn't even thinking about, so I don't know.
I do not know the lowest, smallest.
Director Horn might have something to weigh in there for you.
Yeah, it's my understanding there's a handful of properties that were allowed at about 7,800 square feet, which was in the first development of the community. Those were the ones that we talked about were going to be revised as part of the zoning process, zoning review for minimum lot size to make sure they were non-compliant. So I believe that lot size is 7,800 square feet.
Alderman Sanoyka, this is your second time up. Go for it.
I just also want to refresh everyone's memory that the reason that we did not want to specify the lowest amount of square footage that we have at a single residential lot is because we are also going through a zoning revamp in our city. And so instead of having to come back here and talk about chickens, again, we would not have to return. And all of the other requirements for square footage are already accounted for in the ordinance.
Further discussion? Alderman O'Brien?
And this might be a question for Staff, Manager Crumstock or Director Horn. That is consistent with anything, like there's no minimum lot specifications for. I know we were comparing to rabbit cages or sheds. There's no minimum saying it has to be 8,400 square feet for a rabbit housing or a shed. Is that correct?
Sitting here, I do not think that we do have any of those restrictions.
Okay, that's the way that I read it, but I just wanted to double check, not to put you guys on the spot. But that was the way that I read it. There's no current minimum size for a shed or dog house. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on this particular amendment? Seeing none, then the next step is to cast a vote on the amendment, which is for 14-163B. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Besessi.
Yes.
Diestis.
No.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
No.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Briens.
Yes.
Beniziano.
With five in favor and two opposed, that does pass. Now circling back to the original with these amendments included, is there discussion on this item? Alderman O'Brien?
One point of clarification or potential amendment. It's, I saw a reference to it in 14-166 as well as 14-168. Some of the ordinance refers to calendar days, others just as days. Having past experience of that, not in the city council experience, but just in my corporate professional experience, that does come into question sometimes. And I'm fine either way. Can we just either have everything say calendar days or everything just say business days? Because a couple places refers to five calendar days, like what it talks about in, I think that's the 14-168 is calendar days. Where in 14-166, it just says 10 days.
So you're making a motion to adjust with some sort of standardization?
Correct. Either have everything be calendar days or just business days.
Okay.
Yep.
So is there a second for Alderman O'Brien's request?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Besessi. Is there any discussion on standardizing the consistency in which we spell out days? Weekdays versus business? Alderman Sanoyka?
So I'm looking at the section of the ordinance that states the final day to renew a license is January 1st, which is a holiday. So I would just ask for clarification from staff if we have a license that's due on a holiday, if it's the day before, the day after.
So the other item that I would actually state, Mayor and City Council, is that you have to do your renewal 21 days before. I'm quickly looking for that section.
I think it may be 14-116, Manager Crumstock, I believe.
The 21-day?
I'm sorry.
14-161.
21 days prior, yeah. 21 days prior to the January 1st of each year. So that's in December when they're actually doing their application, so we're not on the holiday.
Okay. Further comment on the days situation?
Yeah, I think, I think just saying calendar days is, I'll just pick one, just saying we should make it calendar days.
That's fair. Absolutely. Just so consistency, I'm okay with calendar days.
Okay. So if there isn't any further discussion on that, I'll have the clerk call the roll on using calendar days throughout this ordinance consistently.
Diestis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
No.
O'Briens.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
There's always a joker.
Besessi.
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, this passes. Okay, so going back to the original now with all the amendments included, is there further discussion on the item? Alderman Besessi?
Yeah. I did some polling in my ward, and currently we're about 60% opposed to it. However, there's 40% in favor. I would like to propose that if we do pass this, that we do it on a temporary basis, three years. Should, you know, people be in it to address the situation where people say, hey, I'm not going to tell my child to get rid of their chicken? You know, it would, they would be able to continue until the chickens pass. But I would propose that. Otherwise, I can't vote for the ordinance.
So are you making a motion to?
Amend it to have a, have it be a temporary. Amend, amend it to have a, have it be a temporary?
Program, a temporary program?
Yeah.
Is there a second on Alderman Basasi's motion to turn this into a temporary program? There's failing a second on your motion, does not move forward. Is there any further comments, discussion? Alderman Sanoyka?
I wanted to just follow up with regards to the, the temporary program. We originally discussed perhaps doing a temporary program and decided that limiting the licenses would have the same effect for us because it's limited. And if we have issues, we would be able to bring back the ordinance before us as a city council and then amend the ordinance as necessary or terminate the program as necessary. So in effect, we are deciding, instead of it being one year or three years or five years or 10 years, if we wanted to terminate the program, we could bring this back to council next month if this passed. And I would like all the aldermen to keep that in mind, that all of the laws that we pass, we can revisit.
Thank you. Further discussion? Alderman O'Brien?
I was just going to say, this is actually why I got into city councils. I just want, before the vote comes, is that I do appreciate all the feedback from the residents, and I did go by the numbers. It was great. We heard from 132 third ward residents, 147 overall. So I will be voting in favor of the ordinance based on the modifications as written. A small margin, it was a margin of two, literally. I had the list, checked it twice, checked it three times, checked it four times across in the council chambers before we came in here. So as written, I will be honoring the majority of the third ward.
Alderman Diastas, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like the other aldermen, I had lots of comments. Mine were basically five to one against, so I'll be voting against it this evening.
Thank you. I've heard quite a bit about this chickens. Alderman Beniziano?
Hi.
No, you have something to say, feel free.
So just to follow up with the other aldermen, so I've talked to residents at great lengths in a couple, just in the past couple of days that were strongly opposed and wanted to know why I voted for. And our numbers in fourth ward are straight down the middle. And to justify voting yes is, we can revisit an ordinance at any time. Unlike our dog nuisance ordinance, there are repercussions in, built into this ordinance to kind of reassure some of the residents that are so opposed to this because they are afraid of the unknown of some nuisances that may or may not come up. But there are repercussions, unlike dogs or cats or rabbits, built in. I think this ordinance has built in all of the residents' concerns that I have spoken to, and that's why I am voting for yes.
Thank you. I commend all the residents who came forward and voiced their position, either for or against. I think it's important that those who did get involved on this topic stay involved on more significant issues as well. You know, I know we have to pick and choose what we have time and attention for, but I do applaud members of our community for being informed. I do applaud the council for taking such a measured approach at this, speaking on behalf of residents, the majority, the minority. I do think sometimes you have to not only go on what majority rule is, but also understand that there are going to be times when a minority is requesting something, and if it does not cause detriment to the greater majority, then you yourself might find you're in a position of minority one day and want to see a right of yours come up. And you should have that inalienable right, whether it's for chickens or something else. And with that, I just want to make sure that everybody is putting this in its appropriate place and understanding that the data shows it is not detrimental to the community. And whether you're for or against it, keep in mind that you should be for your neighbors also finding happiness in their community too. So if there's no further comments or discussion, I would like to have the clerk call the roll.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Basasi?
Hold your eggs.
No.
Diastas?
No.
It's four in favor and three opposed. This passes.
Omelets on Sunday? Maybe a Bloody Mary? Don't condone drinking. Moving along. Item B, Resolution Number 19-R-96, authorize a contract for design services relating to space assessments and conceptual design of various office areas within city buildings. Those buildings being City Hall, Fire Station 16, and the Public Works Facility on Birdnik and Central. This was tabled on September 10th, 2019, at the city council meeting. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? So moved. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Two are MVPs this evening on here. With motions and approvals. Is there any discussion on this item?
Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, from a conceptual standpoint, I understand where staff's coming from on this. The one area that I have a major concern with that I expressed before, but it's still included in here, is planning for our chamber here. And I guess I would request the rest of the aldermen to consider something. A lot of work was done on this a little over a year ago. We have drawings, we had a professional architect designer in here, we had furniture picked off the state contract, we had designs. Now, people can disagree with what the design was and everything, but we had work done. The point I'm trying to make is, until, as a group, we decide we're going to go ahead and actually remodel this space and spend money on new lighting and all that, I think hiring another architect to do the same thing we've done already is just a pure waste of money. So again, you can disagree with what was done before, you can take a look at it and decide if it was worthwhile or not, but to hire someone else and have them come up with another plan, if we're not committed to living up to what they do and have the budget money set aside for it, it's a complete waste of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Further comments, discussion? Alderman Sanoyka?
As a follow-up to Alderman Cannon, I would ask if he is proposing a motion to, to table this particular issue until we have had a chance to vote on whether we want to pursue a certain cap with regards to security and hardening for the city council chambers, which is included in the space assessment.
Well, you know, we did, we went through with hardening also. The chief made a lot of very specific recommendations. And again, I think it's kind of a waste of time for us to actually spend money to do that again if we're not going to live up to what they offered. They offered, you know, there was some very specific requests made about light, about closing in windows here, putting safety features on doors, and there was other issues that we never even got to, but it was all rejected. So again, if we're not going to spend the money to, to implement everything that's proposed, why would we waste our time and energy and more importantly, the taxpayer money on something? Do we do it? So I would propose that we pull this whole section out until we're ready as a group to move on and actually fund this. So that, that's a proposal. I would propose an amendment to the ordinance for that.
And the amendment being to pull out City Hall from this?
No, pull out the city council chamber, this space right we're in.
Okay. And that's part of City, City Hall?
Right. No, Mr. Mayor, I'm not saying, not saying all City Hall. I mean, like, I'm, I'm fine with what the general feeling is of figuring out what space needs are and all that.
Sure.
But in this space, I'm not, I'm not interested in spending a dime until as a group, we all decide that we want to spend the money to get the work done, whatever work we agree to do as a group.
Okay. Now, if, if we omit, and this may be staff can help me, if we omit the city council chambers from this, is that going to reduce the price significantly? Like, is it going to be a significant reduction, you think?
I believe it's about, I think each area is approximately $3,000, and that's why we had each proposals done separately. So if the council did have an area that they were not interested in doing, we could easily eliminate that, you know, through your vote and, and proceed with the other areas.
Okay.
It's $3,100, Mr. Mayor, in here, just to put in a proposal.
Thank you. And then as far as, do you have the numbers on what we spent last time with this?
I, we, short of $3,000, we actually paid the, the person who helped us because she didn't, that didn't cover her cost.
Okay. So we've already spent $3,000?
And we have designs, and we actually had, a couple of our staff people actually went on a road trip to look at other spaces. The furniture we were going to buy at the time was on state contract, and we had pictures of what other cities have done with similar furniture. It was modular, so it was very changeable. If we didn't like the first setup, we could move it very easily.
Okay. So essentially, it's almost a wash, one to one to remove it, if we were to remove it and have find favor among the council.
Sure.
So is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Is there discussion on this item now, moving, removing city council chambers?
For a point of clarification, is when was that done? Like, since 2015? I'm guessing it's within the current law, a couple of years?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's not even two, it was done, this, the date on this is 12/29/2017.
Okay, so not even a full two years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Is there further discussion on omitting city council, council chambers for a city hall building? Alderman Budmats?
Just a point. I mean, the truth is, every time we do this, I kind of feel like a frog in water. And we, and we, and we start out with just nibbling at it with a little bit of planning, and then the next thing you know, we've, we spent 10 Gs or 20 Gs on planning, and then we'll, we don't want to waste that money, so then we go ahead with something. So if we don't have a budget upfront for some of these things, like Mike's saying, that when we voted on that, we were looking at, I think, a total cost of $50,000 or $60,000 tops, and the council wasn't willing to spend the 60 grand. So if we're not willing to spend the 60 grand to do the council chambers at $3,100, and if we're not, if community development, if we're in finance, it's going to cost us another 60. I don't know what it's going to be saying is this, but we're saying $12,700 to get the initial look at this, and then if we go ahead with the design, it's going to be another 60 grand. And so I'm just saying that we have to really be willing to spend the, the end dollars before we invest the initial dollars and have an idea of what those end dollars are. And so when we did it at the council of the whole, it was helpful because we had a straw poll, everybody knew what the budget was, and we made a decision. It probably wasn't the right decision, looking back, but Mike invested a lot of time, and he's right. Why do this again if we're not willing to spend the 50 or the 60 or the 100? So part of me thinks that this is, really belongs in a council of the whole discussion first with a, with a budget attached to it, so that we know what we're voting on as a whole big package, rather than get it nibbled in one piece at a time.
And I was just looking over at Manager Crumstock to see if there's the plausibility of us moving this to a committee of the whole and actually having staff assist us with a reasonable budget, the concept of the budget that we could, as a council, commit to and then communicate on this.
So tabling it and moving it to a COW, we can do, but again, creating a budget is spitballing until we know how much we need to take over. And that's also why we've also talked about using eventually Fire Station 16 for some storage needs as we continue working on some of this. So as long as you don't hold us to numbers, how much until we actually have that, we have no problem having a COW discussion. And again, it's going to be some of the same stuff, looking at some of our space needs, but again, footage, some of the other pieces. We're more than happy, as Alderman Cannon knows, doing road trips. We know most of those buildings pretty well, as you know, but again, it goes back into having a COW. No big discussion. It's just if we provide you with numbers, those are spitballing until we know the actual needs.
Okay. I would, I would hope that we could be within proximity of reality at those times, potentially, hopefully. And if that's the case, is there anyone willing to second Alderman Budmats' request to postpone to a COW?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Is there any conversation now on postponing to a COW? Alderman Sanoyka?
I just would like some clarification from Director Horn because I recall us discussing this as well at the previous committee of the whole.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned about direction because at the previous committee of the whole, we talked about the purpose of the conceptual design was to be able to gather enough accurate information to give the city council an understanding of what the full budget would be to do each location, which is why as part of each proposal, there's an estimate of engineer, of architectural costs associated with full construction drawings. We can't know what the potential construction cost will be till we have some sort of conceptual design. So I, I, it would be pulling a square footage cost, a commercial cost of construction for square footage, just based on industry standard. It will not be able to give the council any kind of accurate information. That's my concern. And that's what the original discussion at the committee of the whole level was, was to ask for guidance as to whether we should pursue contracts or proposals for conceptual drawings.
So if you're indicating that the, the work that will come out of this will give us a greater sense of accuracy and the financial incursion, then I think we should just rewind here to Alderman Cannon's request to just omit council chambers and see if, if the council will approve that so staff can come back with tighter numbers. And then maybe at that point, we could take it, those numbers at the next COW meeting or whenever they're back, the next COW meeting.
Absolutely. That was the intention all along, is to get those conceptual feelings of what, what the cost would be so we could give the council. I believe the discussion was, there was a concern about how to know what to budget in future years if we didn't have an idea of what the actual costs were going to be, so, which I totally appreciate.
Alderman Budmats?
So just for clarification, after we spend 12, 7, or if we reduce it by the 3,100 as Mike suggested, we are going to have a budget after that number, or we're just going to have, is that the goal?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Diastas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two motions on the floor. I think we need to do something with those.
Right. Well, yes, that's where I'm going to rewind to now, so if we can either redact your committee of the whole.
I'm willing to redact that.
Okay. And then the second for his, is the second, the individual who seconded it?
Me.
Are they willing? Are you willing to remove that?
I'm willing to retract also.
And stick to the?
Stick to my.
Prior motion, which was just to omit city council chambers?
Right. Till another date.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on omitting city council chambers? Seeing none, I'd like the clerk to call the roll on that.
I was, I was just going to ask one thing on that.
Oh, dig it out a little bit further, thank you.
My question would be, if we omit the city council chambers on this, and then we come back and we're going to do the city, city council chambers, can we expect that that's going to be a lot more than the 30, the?
31.
3,100? Because they're coming back again to do something that they could have done the first time they were here?
Alderman Cannon?
Mr. Mayor, you can make that comment about all of them, John. They're all going to be a lot more. These are just basic preliminary ideas. It's bringing your car in for a tune-up. And all of a sudden, they find, you know, they're going to spend a lot more money than just doing a tune-up if you have to do a lot more stuff. They're just giving you a suggestion on a broad picture of the thing, and they probably can give you a high and a low on what, what to expect, but we're not going to get exact numbers.
And Alderman Beniziano, you have something to say?
So I haven't seen the plans from 2017. I'm, I don't know if, I am shaking his head. Director Horn hasn't either. So.
He did, he just doesn't remember, that's all.
Be able to answer my question. Is those plans sufficient to give us the information that we need? I don't know if there's a budget attached to those. I don't even know what's included in them.
That would be my goal, to get ahold of those drawings and include those when our architect has cost estimates related to the other areas, and basically make some educated guesses and work with the architect to kind of fine tune those costs so we can at least provide the council some sort of budget number more comprehensively by taking advantage of those plans.
So to reframe this, essentially what we're going to do is take the rest of City Hall, Fire Station 16, and the Public Works Facilities, and bring those to a point at which the council chambers are at in the design drawing plans from 2017. Is that fair?
Just for clarification, in the memorandum, we put what the original proposal, resolution was for. Per the direction of the mayor and city council last week, we will only be looking at, given, if, if the council chambers is removed, we will only be looking at community development at City Hall, the finance department at City Hall, and public works administrative areas. Those are the three proposals really that we will be looking at. We will look at the council chambers proposal from 2017. We will look at the council chambers, um, proposal from 2017, and so when we come back to city council with the results of all that, it will be comprehensive, but it, um, staff will be doing the Fire Station 16 report, uh, ourselves.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further comments about the omission of council chambers at this time? Seeing none, I'm gonna have the clerk call the roll on voting to omit council chambers.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
That's unanimous, with seven in favor, this resolution is adopted with the amendment. That moves us on to line item C, resolution number 19-r-97. This is to approve change order number one for the HVAC system control, system phase two for city hall. It was postponed on September 10th, 2019 city council meeting, and there is a request now to postpone until the October 8th, 2019 city council meeting. Is there a motion to postpone this resolution? Thank you, Alderman Beniziano, is there? Second, thank you, Alderman Budmats. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this resolution is postponed. Next up, ordinance is in for first reading, we have one ordinance here, it consists of item D, is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Ordinance number 19-00, amended division two, entitled Rules of Procedure of Article Two, entitled Council, of Chapter Two, entitled Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows, by adding thereto section two dash 114, entitled Attendance at Meetings by Means Other Than Physical Presence, Remote Attendance. Is there any discussion? Wonderful, seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance move forward to second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, this ordinance will move forward to second reading. Moving on to new business, I would like a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for September 24th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, is there, thank you, Alderman Cannon, for your second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this warrant is approved. The next item on the agenda are the consent resolutions, it consists of five items, items F through J. Does any alderman wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolution? Alderman Cannon?
You will not be happy with me, Mr. Mayor, G, H, I, and J.
G, H, I, and J, meaning, uh?
You got one.
Yeah, one item, and that is F. And, that is resolution number 19-r-98, establish a date and time for Halloween. Is there such a motion? Oh boy. Is there such a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis, thank you, Alderman Beniziano, for your second. The question is, shall the one resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, that is adopted.
Now, we can circle back, and we have resolution number 19-r-99, authorize the annual leak detection survey of the city's water system. Alderman Cannon, you had pulled this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, you know, I'm not a leak expert.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I need a motion.
I'm sorry.
May I have a motion?
Yes.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Alderman Sanoyka? Yes, I'm the next one, go ahead, Alderman Cannon.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm not a leak expert, but you know, I, looking at the, at the write-up that we got from, um, Public Works, I don't know if you noticed, but 11 of these leaks were in hydrants, and I'm wondering, are we having a problem with hydrants, or is there something maybe we should be addressing as a city? Are they wearing out quicker than they should be, or do more of them need to be replaced? Because there was only two that weren't hydrants, and I was kinda surprised by that.
Oh, Director Horn, yeah. Thank you, Mayor, um, yeah, the, quite honestly, there's a lot of old hydrants on the system, um, many prior to 1970. Many of those hydrants, um, are privately owned by developments, et cetera, so, it's not necessarily that we repair them, um, but, uh, we would work with the owner to get those replaced. Uh, we also have, as part of our capital improvement plan, um, $50,000 allocated each year to replace hydrants and valves that are failing, so we do have a program in place to replace hydrants and valves, but it, it's just a part of infrastructure, um, that they go bad over time.
So, do we, so how many, for 50,000, how many, how many can we fix in a year, about? Or replace? What does one cost?
If, if we just did hydrants only, uh, probably seven hydrants.
That's all?
Yeah.
And we have 1400 of them?
Yeah.
And we can do seven a year?
Uh, with 50,000, it, it's about between 5 and 8,000 per hydrant.
So, these 11 that are bad, do we repair those, or replace them?
Some of, some are repairs, um, the gasket will wear out, or a, a piece of gravel will get stuck in the gasket, and cause the hydrant to leak, um, those are easily replaced, um, from above ground, um, but a full replacement of a, like a 1970 hydrant, Traverse City hydrant, to a brand-new waterless hydrant is about 5,000 for the hydrant, and 3,000 for a contractor to dig it up and replace it.
Okay, thanks for the answers.
Sure.
Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted.
Next up is resolution number 19-r-100, award professional design engineering services for contract for the proposed 2020 road resurfacing project. Is there a motion to consider this resolution?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis, thank you, Alderman Cannon, for the second. Alderman Cannon, you had pulled this one, so you're entitled to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, H and I are basically the same thing, in, in my discussion, um, so I don't really need to be called on for the second one. Um, you know, Burke Engineering is a company that we use, year in and year out, and I have nothing but complimentary thoughts about how they do their work and what they do for our city. The only thing I has, ask is, you know, in light of the fact that we're here representing the taxpayers' money, I think we owe it to the taxpayers, to at least every year or two, get competing bids, just to see where our pricing stands versus other cities, other engineering companies. So, I will, I will support this tonight, but going forward, I just wanna be on record that I will not support this in the future, if we don't have some competing bids, there's plenty of people that can do this work, and again, I can't emphasize enough, Burke Engineering is very professional, they just did My Street, they did a wonderful job, their staff was great, so I, this is not a shot at them, I think it's about a shot of taking our taxpayer money serious. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on that? Alderman Sanoyka?
A question for Director Horn, and perhaps, uh, City Manager Crumstock, if we were to make a motion to, uh, conduct a cost comparison for these types of projects, what would that require?
Um, the process, again, I, I need to continually, um, stress that, when it comes to professional design services, we do not bid out the work. Um, when it comes to professional design services, you, um, get a request for qualifications, and, um, it's used, uh, the process we use is called QBS, or qualification-based selection. Um, after that process occurs, then you negotiate a price with the selected, um, design firm. A couple different things, uh, that process takes about two and a half months to do, uh, internally, um, and, and, um, the other point I would make is, uh, when we did, it may have been a year ago now, but we did a presentation to the city council about the different areas of, um, work that we, um, contract out to different design firms, um, we talked about the importance of having our city engineer involved in the road program, because it really, all the other projects revolve around that, and it really, um, takes a lot of planning, uh, front-end planning, to understand the intricacies of the project, um, than, than to, to, uh, contract that work out.
Manager Crumstock?
Uh, Mayor and City Council, we do look at other engineering firms, we do evaluate their pricing, um, we have, obviously, in the city of Rolling Meadows, Burke Engineering is only one engineer that's in here, but RJN, Baxter Woodman, but we do have other, um, ideas from other municipalities, what's being charged for services like that, so again, we do evaluate that too, as we have our discussions with any of our engineers.
Thank you. Alderman Sanoyka, second bite.
Thank you. As a follow-up, then, um, I would like for us to consider what the council, um, can do with regards to providing direction, because I would not like to stop any projects going forward, um, I would like us to be able to go to our residents and say all of the great things that we can usually say about the people that we work with, um, and then also be able to compare with pricing, if that's what we're already doing, and to have that in some sort of report or table that we can present to our residents.
Thank you. Alderman Bessesi?
Yeah, um, I would like to just state that, uh, some of these roads are currently already ripped up, and will need the resurfacing in the spring to do this, so, I wanna make sure that we don't do anything to delay this from happening, 'cause like I said, half these roads are already gravel, 'cause they've already been ripped up to put the water maids in, so we need to make sure we don't do anything at all to delay this.
Thank you. Any further comments? Alderman Budmats?
Um, echoing, uh, Mike's comments about this year and next year, it would be, if, if the staff cannot bring us alternate proposals, or bids, or whatever you wanna call it, and they've decided that Christopher Burke is the most qualified, then I would really ask that they show us that we're paying something that's comparable to other villages, and that, and that we're not getting overcharged, and so, however you can do that, so there's a comfort level on, on this council, that we're not being wasteful, or that we're not adequately worried about the taxpayers' dollars, because it makes me very uncomfortable that we just, time and time and time, say, yep, Christopher Burke's our guy, yep, Christopher Burke's our guy, and, and it makes me feel uncomfortable, I don't, I don't even have a problem with his work, I'm just saying that I don't wanna pay top dollar for something, and I wanna make sure that what we're getting is competitive, and that Mount Prospect, or whoever it is, is paying 10 dollars per square foot of road for engineering, or whatever the number is, that we're in the same ballpark.
That won't be a problem.
Thank you.
You can provide that.
Thank you. Further comments?
I just have a question for our parliamentarian, so when we're stating, um, what I've stated, and what Alderman Cannon and Alderman Budmats are stating, do we need to formulate this into a motion, in order to have?
No, that's not necessary, um, the staff direction is sufficient.
Okay.
Thank you, um, seeing no further comments, then, the question is, shall this resolution, um, be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, that resolution is adopted. Next up, resolution number 19-r-102, authorize the support of Cook County 6B classification incentive renewal for LC Mold Inc., and 3640 Edison Place. Is there a motion to consider this resolution?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis, is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Cannon, and Alderman Cannon, you had pulled this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I just wanna assure the people that are here representing that company, I have nothing bad to say, so, I don't want you to be nervous that I pulled it, uh, the reason I pulled it is I stopped by, I drove by your location today, around your billing and everything, um, I know this might sound petty, but I was wondering, um, I'm gonna support this tonight, and if we pass it, it would be really nice if you updated some of your things quickly, like the dead tree in front of the building, a couple things like that, that are just a little bit, nothing major, just, I understand you've made a commitment, you're gonna spend some money over time, but, if you could do it, I'm, I'm very happy that you're here in our city, and I'm glad your, your business is growing, thank you for that, there's small things, but I just, if you could make it look a little bit nicer, it would be, probably would be nice for everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Further comments? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, that resolution is adopted. That brings us now, as a council, to other business and reports, there are no mayor's appointments at this time, nor are there mayor's proclamations. Is there a city clerk report?
There is none.
Thank you. This would move us along to staff reports, community items of interest, Manager Crumstock?
I'm slowing it down, um, obviously, we wanna mention, the first item is, the city, thanks everybody who made the last Friday Rocks, um, this season, it took place on Friday, September 13th, it was a nice, cool night, but we had a beautiful, uh, event that happened, uh, then we also do wanna mention, do the flooding that happened in Campbell Hill Park in September, uh, the 12th Annual Duck Race is now scheduled to happen on Saturday, October 5th, at 1:00 PM, and that's during the annual home down, o-down, because it has not happened up to this point in time, I can say that there are a few tickets left, and they can be purchased at the Park District, costs are still 5 dollars per duck, or purchase a quack pack, um, for five ducks for 20 dollars, and that's it for, uh, this year, that I can say quack pack. Um, thank you to everyone who attended the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce Resources
up to this point in time. I can say that there are a few tickets left, and they can be purchased at the Park District. Costs are still five dollars per duck, or purchase a quack pack for five ducks for twenty dollars. And that's it for this year that I can say quack pack. Thank you to everyone who attended the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce Resources for Community Living, and was also at the Stadium Sports Club and Pizza. That was at forty-one fifteen Elgonquin Road. The rolling and cruising food truck event was held on Saturday, September fourteenth. We hope that they will continue this adventure, and obviously, continue, hopefully, an Oktoberfest kind of feel. The next bike ride is sponsored by the Environmental Committee is scheduled for this Saturday, September twenty-eighth. Starts at nine AM at the Community Church, twenty-seven twenty Kirchhoff Road. It will be back by ten o'clock, so you can be back for the meet and greet. And then if you miss the Saturday, August twenty-fourth, City Market, the last regularly scheduled market for 2019 is set for Saturday, September twenty-eighth, between ten AM and two PM, in the parking lot of Community Church, twenty-seven twenty Kirchhoff Road. There's also, as I've mentioned in the past, this special City Market will feature music by Cole Brant, and the Arlington Heights School of Rocks will play later in that day. There will be free character tours. There will be new vendors. There will be food and fun for the entire family. Please come out this Saturday, September twenty-eighth. And actually, what I've alluded to on this Saturday, September twenty-eighth, between ten AM and eleven AM, the city council will be conducting a meet and greet at the City Market, and that's again, at the Community Church Parking Lot at twenty-seven twenty Kirchhoff Road. This is really a great opportunity for residents and friends of Rolling Meadows, connect with your elected officials. There is no agenda, so it's, again, it's an open forum. I'm pretty sure we won't have any discussions on chicken, saying that they approved tonight.
Hopefully not.
On Saturday, October fifth, Public Works in Swank will be conducting an electronic and document destruction event. This will happen between nine AM and noon at the Public Works Building located at thirty-nine hundred Birdnet Street. And then also, on October fifth, what I just alluded to, and will be a little more discussion by assistant to the city manager, Laurie Cizak, who's working on her speech right now, we'll have the hometown hoedown in Campbell Hill Park from noon to five PM. And then, as I mentioned before, on Saturday, October twelfth, the fire department will be conducting an open house between ten AM and two PM at the New Kurtz Fire Station at twenty-four fifty-five Plum Grove Road. They do have some newly scheduled items. Obviously, it's family-oriented, and there is some food as it lasts, and you can see the fire chief and the deputy actually cook. But then also on Thursday, October twenty-fourth, from nine-thirty AM to eleven-thirty, State Representative Tom Morrison, in partnership with the Palatine Township Senior Citizen Council, will be conducting a free senior fair at the Palatine Senior Center, and that's five oh five South Quentin Road, Palatine. For more information, please contact eight-four-seven two oh two six five eight four. And again, you do need to be in Palatine Township to partake in that. And then, obviously, this is the last meeting of the month, so for October, committee meetings that we have coming up next week. Economic Development Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, October first, at six PM. Tentative items, scheduled business list feedback, and new list distribution, a discussion pertaining to objectives, planned topics for the future, business advocate update, next level, Northwest update, other items of interest in the Chamber of Commerce meeting. Also on that night, Tuesday, October first, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting at seven PM, not their usual seven-thirty PM, but tentatively, there are five items for hearings scheduled, and they consist of a sign appeal for an electronic billboard sign at thirty-one oh five Tollview Drive, M-one Manufacturing District, Sam Rowdy from Greenberg Media petition. This was continued, and again, these are all draft items, as I was discussing. There's number two, a variance request for a side yard setback for the building locating at thirty-seven thirty-seven thirty-eight thirty-seven Industrial Avenue. That is in our M-one Manufacturing District. Nancy Lee Carlson of Leaderman Peterson Corporation is the petitioner. This was also continued. It's also now being withdrawn by the petitioner, but again, it needs to be out there that it was continued and now will be removed. Number three is a tax amendment by the City of Rolling Meadows zoning code for ordinance section one-two-two dash two-two-one C to allow microbrews as a special use in the M-one Manufacturing District. We are, as the City of Rolling Meadows, we are the petitioner on that, and that actually will lead to a discussion in November for a microbrew that is coming into the City of Rolling Meadows, but we do need to have that zoning code change. Number four is a tax amendment for the City of Rolling Meadows Code of Ordinances, section one-two-two dash two-two-one C twelve, and one-two-two dash two-two-one C thirteen, to allow recreational marijuana cultivation and dispensing facilities as special use in the M-one Manufacturing District. Again, the City of Rolling Meadows is petitioner on that. And then the final item is some of the zoning and additional workshops, that's all the zoning code updates that's moving on. So those are the items of interest, and additional meetings coming up.
Thank you. Quite extensive. August business, new businesses for 2019?
I would just mention that there's seven new businesses, and nothing to really truly highlight.
Okay. Thank you. Hometown Hoedown.
Thank you, Mayor. Just off those cowboy boots, and giddy up on down to the fourth annual Hometown Hoedown on Saturday, October fifth, at Campbell Hill Park. This country western style Fall Fest will take place rain or shine from twelve to five PM, and will feature a great lineup of live music and activities that will please all ages. Thank you to Gallagher for your generous sponsorship of this event, as well as the Rolling Meadows Park District for your support. The Hoedown will feature free horse-drawn hay rides, along with a petting zoo, pony rides, square dancing, kids' crafts, games, and a fall photo booth. A delicious five-dollar cowboy cookout will be served from twelve-thirty to two-thirty. The country western band, Wild Earp, will play from two-thirty to four-thirty, and immediately after, the Rolling Meadows Community Events Foundation volunteers will announce the grand prize winner of the rolling raffle. Currently, the money pot is at eleven hundred dollars to a single winner. Tickets can still be purchased at City Hall, the City Market this Saturday, or at the Hoedown. Also, at this year's Hometown Hoedown, the rescheduled duck race will take place at one PM sharp. Many winners will receive great prizes with a five-hundred-dollar grand prize. For more information on the Hometown Hoedown, check the city's website or contact City Hall. We hope to see you there.
Thank you. Director Horn, we have the Traffic Review Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regard to the Traffic Review Committee, staff did meet in September to discuss a variety of items listed on the agenda in your packets. Of particular interest on new business was speeding and parking issues on Library Road, which the police department has agreed to step up enforcement in that area. What the only other item of interest is, pertains to my next item, which is establishing the ribbon-cutting date for the Barker Avenue Bridge.
Nice. Thank you. Circling back to you, Manager Crumstock, we have September twenty-six, 2019, Special Committee of the Whole Agenda.
So obviously, per state statute, we have put in the newspaper, and we also have posted the agenda for the Special Committee of the Whole meeting for, again, September twenty-six, this Thursday, starting at seven-thirty. The only discussion item that is to be done is a G-one discussion item continuation from our last count, and that is it for this meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you for sharing. That brings us now to matters not on the agenda. Are there any matters that are not on the agenda this evening? Alderman Veneziano?
Thank you. So announcement, the St. Collette Tigers is hosting a Walk-a-thon. Families, neighbors, parishioners, and non-parishioners are invited to come and cheer us on, on our Tiger Walk-a-thon. Come on out and support our walkers on October the eleventh at ten AM. Pledges are being accepted up until the day of the event. Every dollar will help keep our school doors open. We did receive news from the Archdiocese that they will be reviewing in January if St. Collette's School will be closing. So any pledges can be dropped off at the school. Any questions can be referred to the school office at St. Collette, or emailed to myself.
Thank you for sharing. Any further matters not on the agenda? Alderman Bud Metz?
A question. Under section two-thirty-nine, it says special meetings. I'm looking for some advice or some description. It says, "Any special meeting attended by all members of the council shall be a regular meeting for the transaction of business, provided that agenda items are disclosed at the time of notification of the special meeting." So I'm curious, does that mean on Thursday's meeting, if somebody made a motion and we passed it, that it would in fact become ordinance?
No, the meeting that's being held is a meeting of the Committee of the Whole, and it's an item on the agenda for discussion only.
Just so I understood, when I read this, I was a little confused.
Okay.
Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know about three months ago, I made a request for some appraisals on some property, and we haven't seen anything in writing yet, so I'm requesting that in writing, we get a report, the first meeting in October, with contact information of who's been contacted and what their opinion was, if they're not going to appraise our property. But I would like to see it in writing, and who was contacted, and if they don't want to appraise our property, why they wouldn't want to do that.
Thank you. End the date again, October first.
First meeting in October.
First meeting in October.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for bringing that up. Alderman Bud Metz?
Second bite, yeah. Well, there was, my understanding is, there was some pedestrian killed on Elgonquin Road.
Again.
Again. And I'd like the Traffic Committee to look at that specific stretch of Elgonquin. I'm told that it's dark, that pedestrians regularly cross the road at this point, where there is not a crosswalk. And so if we need to do something to provide greater safety, despite there not being a crosswalk, maybe we need to look at installing one, or better lighting, so that some, my understanding is, this is the very same spot somebody was killed two or three years ago. So it's just something for the Traffic Committee to please look at and report back to us about if they could.
Thank you. Alderman Sanoyka?
As, to continue along that line, I was going to request from staff if they have any recommendations or solutions for making Elgonquin safer, that I could perhaps bring to the Northwest Municipal Conference Bike and Pedestrian Committee, to see what kind of funds might be available from there, in order to be able to support projects that would make that road safer for pedestrians. That meeting should be in the third week of October 2019.
Thank you. Alderman Sanoyka. Manager Crumstock?
So we'll send it to the Traffic Review Committee, but there are some extenuating circumstances on the newest incident, and all I could really say is that there is an investigation going on that, but completely different from the other incident that happened a few years ago. So that's my vagueness, that I can mention what's going on with that one at this point in time.
Thank you. Further matters not on the agenda? Great. Well, then, we will move on to the next session, which is a closed session for personnel under the five ILCS one-twenty slash two C one of the Illinois Open Meeting Act. There is a request, like I said, to go into closed session, and it does require a motion and a roll call vote. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Passessi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Metz.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With five in favor and one opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session.